Okay, so let's do this comprehensive problem. It's set up, I'll tell you it's set up just a little bit differently than the way the test is set up. The way the test is set up is, looks exactly like the first comprehensive problem. This is real simple, we're gonna go through the same steps. So, I have, I'm listing the questions here, so to help walk you through the process, because that's what I do on the exam. So, so let's go through and kind of see what's going on. So there's a construction company that is considering expanding into the excavation business. Does that sound familiar, Andy? This is an activity. Excavation is an activity that involves clearing land, then digging for power lines and sewer lines. And so this is a real business, this is what happens. Andy's dad is involved in this business. He makes real estate investments, but he started off as an excavator. And we have a couple, well, one large excavation company here in White County who does most of the work. Every time there's a development, like the Ulta and Hobbie Bobby, Johnny Brock Excavation cleared all that property. We have a Southwind Residential Real Estate, Johnny Brock came in and cleared all that property. He digs all the trenches for the power lines and the water and sewer. And he put the streets and the drains in, he did all that stuff, that's what they do. Alright, so management leads, they'll have to purchase some equipment, okay? And then they're gonna have to depreciate that equipment, they're gonna have to build a building to store the equipment, to keep it safe and maintaining, dry. They're gonna have to hire new employees for this business. They think that they're gonna, they're gonna have to pay these employees to get them on payroll before they start cash flowing. They're gonna have to pay for advertising, they're gonna have to pay for some accounts receivable. In other words, they'll start doing some work for clients and charge the clients, but not receive payment for 30 or 45 or 60 days, so, but meanwhile, they're gonna have to pay their bills. And then they'll recover all their working capital at the end of the project. They plan to run the business for 10 years, then they plan to sell it for one-time sales. So, you know, maybe the guy's 50 years old, he wants to retire at 60, or whatever his plan is. Alright, so their marketing and accounting people have offered the following projections. And then they have two sources of capital, and they, and so I'll give you the information you need for the capital. So, let's start off with the questions, with that in mind, what we're looking at. Should they do this business? Should they expand into excavation? So, what is their CFO? What is their outflow at time zero? And so the outflow is gonna be net capital spending, which is PP and E, and net working capital. Those are the two sources of spending. This is what they're gonna have to spend to go into this business. Okay? So, PP and E. And by the way, I didn't put in there that they did a marketing study. If they had, ignore it. I didn't, there's no prototype to do, so. Alright, so they got six bulldozers at $100,000 each. So that's 600,000. And then they have eight backhoes at $80,000 each. I think that's 640,000. And then they have five mixers and five pavers, so that's 10 at $50,000 each. So that's 500,000. Alright, so, and then they have a building. And the building is like seven, how much is the building?
200,000?
Yeah, 200,000. Yeah, so let's see, where is that?
It's like a fairground.
1,000 walking people, 200,000 maintaining, where is it?
It's at the end of the second. It's right off of the.
Oh, there it is, there it is, there it is. So 200,000. Alright, so let's add this up. So 1,000,240, 1,00740, 1,00940, is that right? Divided by 10, and we're simplifying it, equipment like this, I think, is usually 70 or, but we'd have to look these and look that up. So we have 194K is our depreciation. Okay? Then we have net working capital, and that, that's part of CFO, but it's not a part of what we're gonna depreciate. Anything else? That's it. So 5 and 3 is 8, 900,000. So CFO is 1,940,000 plus 900,000, 2,840,000. Okay? You gotta spend money to make money. So we're gonna have to spend about, you know, about a little over 2.8 million dollars upfront. Okay? That'll make you, take a deep breath. Alright, so that answers the first question, 2,840,000. What will their depreciation be? That's gonna be 194,000. That answers the second question. Everybody see what we're doing? And again, on the final, I'm gonna ask specific questions. Yeah, Jackson?
So for the CFO, did you do the 194,000 plus the 900,000?
No. No, the CFO is the net capital spending, all of the net capital. The 194,000 is just depreciation expense. This is how much we're spending on equipment. 1.94 million, uh, 1.9 million. Okay? But then we divide that by 10, that's depreciation expense. That goes on the income statement. Yeah, that's not part of CFO. But we gotta calculate that separately. We have, we have to keep the net capital spending separate. There are two components to CFO. Net capital spending, which is PP and E, let's do that. And then net working capital. And this is depreciated. This is not. Alright?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, good question. Alright. So now let's do the income statement. Okay? So you've got sales, and then cost of goods sold, and gross profit, and SG and A, depreciation, EBIT, taxes, and operating cash flow. Okay? So, sales would be 12 projects, that's one month, times $250,000 per project. So, how much is that?
3 million.
3 million dollars. I think we're gonna generate 3 million in sales. Okay? And cost of goods sold is 100,000 per project, plus 35,000 per project. Okay? So 12 projects, times 135,000. And I tried to match up, paying 25 employees $40,000 a year, divided by 12, and that's how I got it. So how much is that? Alright. Alright, so our gross profit is that minus that. How much is that gonna be? Is that right? What is that noise? Sounds like thunder, but it's not.
It's like a fogstorm.
Yeah. Okay, so SG and A, we think the office is gonna cost us 200,000 to operate. Have to hire another bookkeeper, people to keep up the projects, maybe some kind of project manager and marketing person. And the depreciation is 194,000. And, oh, and there's another line. SG and A, let's call it SG and A and maintenance. Okay? We're gonna have to spend some money on the equipment. So let's add that maintenance in there too. So that's another 200, so we got 400,000. Those bulldozers and backhoes, if they wear out. Alright. So what's our EBIT? Alright, and then our taxes are 20%. So what will our taxes be? Alright. So our operating cash flow is this, plus this, minus that. So what's our operating cash flow gonna be? EBIT plus depreciation minus taxes. It's a formula. OCF equals EBIT plus depreciation minus taxes. Put it on your card. Even?
822,800.
822,000, oh, one eight?
800.
Alright, so there's our operating cash flow. Okay, so with this information, we can already do an internal rate return. So let's go ahead and, let's not do that right now, let's go ahead and move over to doing our WAC. Let's bring this over here, get this out of the way.
So on the test, you're gonna have sales cost, EBIT, those will all be in the question?
Well, not, I'm not sure that each individual line, but there'll be three or four lines.
Drop it down.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'll walk you through the whole process. It's just too long a process just to, you know, put one question. Okay, what's the market value of stock? So what we're trying, we're gonna have to, what we're trying to put together is the WAC table, which is the source of capital, which we know is gonna be bonds, debt, and stock, on the stock, and then percentage of each, and then the cost of each, and then the weight, the, whoops, the weighted average. The weighted cost. Alright, so let's do the, let's find the percentage of, so, the market value of bonds. Again, there are two ways to look at this. One way is to look at the, if you're planning to raise new capital, what percentages are you gonna use to raise the new capital? Or are you gonna try to just maintain the same ratio that you have now in your equity or in your capital structure? So if you, if you are currently 60% debt and 40% equity, then we're gonna assume that you're, that's what you're gonna raise going forward to fund this project. We're gonna try to maintain that, okay? So the market value of the bonds, they have 6280 times 1035. So you're selling at a premium, and what does that equal?
6,499,800.
Let's go ahead and put 6,500,000, just to make it nice and even. Okay? And the market value of stocks, of the stock, they have 55,000 shares, How much is that?
3.5 million.
3 million, 500,000. So they're gonna use a little more, they got a little more debt than equity, that's pretty standard. Don't tell your dad that, Andy. The problem that Andy's dad has with using debt is that it can force you to do things that you really don't wanna do. You know, you might have to cut prices, you might have to take on contracts that you really don't wanna take on in order to make a debt service payment. So he'd rather say, "We're gonna bite the bullet and use all equity, and we'll have a lot more freedom and flexibility." And that has worked well for him in his career. Okay? So we got $10 million is their current capital base, okay? And so we know this is 65%, and this is 35%. So, 65% and 35%. Alright. So now let's do the cost of debt. And so we know that 1,000 is our future value, always start with that, so we don't forget. And 1035 plus minus is our present value. And 0.1 times 1,000 divided by 2, 50 is the payment. Okay? And 10 times 2 equals 20, that's the N, compute I Y. And what's the cost, the semi-annual cost of debt?
4.73.
Okay, 4.73%. Times 2, is it semi-annual?
9.45.
Times 1 minus 0.2, because they're paying 20% taxes, so they got a 20% subsidy or reduction in their cost, and that's what? What's their after-tax?
7.56.
Say again, please?
7.56.
7.56%. Alright, so we'll go ahead and put this up here. Alright. Now let's do the cost of equity, or cost of common stock. And let's do cap M and dividend discount model. So, cap M, Treasury bill has a yield of 2.5%. 0.025, pretty close to where we are right now. Plus a beta of 1.3, times the stock market return of 10%, minus 0.025. So this is 0.075 times 1.3. So do this first, then multiply this by this, and then add 0.025 in. So 0.075 times 1.3 plus 0.025 equals what?
12.25%.
Okay, thank you. 12.25%. Equity's always more expensive than debt. Alright, oh, I'm sorry, I put that in the wrong spot. Let's see, 0.025 plus 1.3 minus 1.0, minus 0.025 equals 0.25%. Alright, now let's do the dividend discount model. Okay? And that is D1 over K plus, I'm sorry, D1 over P, plus G. Alright, so G is equal to SGR or CAGR. We're gonna do CAGR. And CAGR is 2.25, beginning value divided by beginning value. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, minus 1, raised to the 1 over 4, minus 1. So what's our G? Yes?
I don't know, my.
This is a little hard to figure out. That's what I gotta, okay, I believe. I haven't written the numbers yet. It's a little aggressive, but, okay. So, alright, so let's add 1 to that, 1.2247, times 2.25, and that's our next dividend. So here's our G. D1, add 1 to it. So what's our next dividend? This is our last dividend, what's our next dividend?
2.76.
2.76, divided by 63, 1.64, plus 0.2247. Okay? So the dividend yield, $2.76 divided by 63, 64, plus 0.2247 is equal to our K.
26.8.
Wow. I got a little happy with the dividends. Alright, so we've got this number here, and this number here. I told you sometimes they're, they're very, so 26.8% and 12.25%. Let's add them up and divide by 2, let's find the average. So 12.25 plus 26.8 divided by 2. Was that about 18, 19 and 1/2%? Do what?
19.53.
Yeah. Equals 19.53%. Everybody see what I did? I found the cost of equity using two different methods. And then we're gonna just average it, because we're not sure which is right.
On D1, did, where did you get to 1.2247, is that what that is?
Growth rate. D1 is DO times 1 plus G. G is CAGR. All I need to do to scale it back a little bit is just slow the dividend growth down some, which I'll do. Alright, so we have 19.53%. Alright? So now, let's multiply the percentage times the cost of bonds. 65% times 7.56% is equal to what?
4.91%.
Okay? And then 35% times 19.53%.
6.84.
Okay? Let's add them up. 5, 17, 11.75%. That's our weighted average cost of capital. Looks a lot like the other one, 11.77%. Okay? So CFO is equal to how much? Plus minus, don't forget that, you'll get an error five message. Okay? CO1 is equal to 822,800. And F01 is 9. It's a 10-year project, but in the 10th year, two things are gonna happen. Let's change one, let's change one dimension of this. Let's, instead of saying we're gonna sell it for one-time sales, that's way too, that's too much, I think, given. We'll sell it for two times operating cash flow. So the sales price is 2 times OCF. Alright, so CO2 is equal to 822,800, plus, how much did we say our net working capital was? Because we're gonna get it back. Yeah, Jackson?
Are we doing this for the WAC?
No, we've already done the WAC.
Which one was the WAC, then? If you don't mind me asking? D19 or? Oh, okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
You bet.
I'll do IRR then.
That's why we're here. Glad you asked. You're not the only one thinking that. You're just the only one who has the guts to ask. I appreciate it. Alright, how much is our net working capital?
9,000.
Plus 900,000, plus the 2 times 822,800. So what's CO2? And you can use the parentheses, you can say 822,800 plus 900,000 plus, open paren, 2 times 822,800, close paren.
It's 3,368,400.
Okay?
Why do you multiply the 822,800 by 2 again?
Because I said we'll sell it for two times operating cash flow. It's just an assumption of the problem. You won't have that on the bond. Yeah, right.
Is that 900 or 900,000?
It's 900,000. And that's the net working capital?
Yeah. Can you, sorry, can you just repeat CFO?
Can you, sorry, can you just repeat CO2 then? Let you, so, why did you?
So we're gonna get the last year's operating cash flow. Plus we're gonna recover all of our networking capital. And actually, that's, that's probably not a good. We're probably only gonna recover, I would say, the third of it. I need to fine tune it. Which is the accounts receivable. We're not gonna recover the money we spent on salary, employees, and things like that. Yeah?
Why do you add back 900,000?
This is the networking capital. It's an assumption.
Okay.
And so the problem's either gonna tell you we are or they're wrong. Yeah?
Um, I think that that should be 3,368.
68?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, let's make an adjustment. I'm trying to fine tune this. Let's say we get a third of the, um, network capital back. That's just the accounts receivable. So that'd be 300,000. The rest of the expenses, the advertising and stuff like that, salaries, we're not gonna get that back. Alright? Alright, so how much are we gonna get back at the end of last year? There you go. Alright. Okay. Um, let's see. F02 equals 1. NPV I equals 11.75. Enter. Down arrow. Compute. And what do you get? And IRR compute.
28.16.
Do what?
28.16.
28.16%. Okay. If this is the only project we're looking at, are we gonna do this project? Oh, yeah. We're gonna do this project. We're creating, you know, we're creating 2.5 million dollars worth of value. We're gonna do it. Alright. So now, let's adjust our WACC. 15% riskier. So 11.75 times 1.15 equals what?
13.51.
Okay? NPVI equals 13.51. Enter, down arrow, compute. Loading again. Okay? And now, um, 15% less risky. 11.75 times 1 minus point 15. What's our new adjusted WACC?
9.99.
Okay, so, uh, NPVI I equals 9.99. Enter, down arrow, and compute. So you see the impact of adjusting the, the WACC? What do you think? Alright, second pass through it. Get a little better, Jackson?
When you're doing the, uh, the more risky?
Yeah?
Um, is that the 1 minus point 15? Is the other way?
Yeah, you add that premium too. More risky, add. Less risky, subtract.
Doctor, why does the net present value go up when the risk goes down?
'Cause the relationship between interest rates, what cost of capital.
Okay.
There's an inverse relationship. That's the way the math works. There's an opportunity cost. Okay? So you're willing to, um, so the higher the opportunity cost is, the higher the missed, um, rate, the less you would pay for it today. In other words, if you wanna earn a higher rate of return, a higher rate, you pay a lower price upfront. If you pay a higher price upfront, you're gonna earn a lower rate of return. The cash flows, the amount and timing of the cash flows don't change. So the opportunity cost that you have to earn money, the higher that opportunity costs, the less the project is worth doing.